Tape on?
Yeah, then it's five fifty-nine.
Okay.
And I'm showing six o'clock.
Okay. I'll call the Tremont planning board meeting of Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-three to order at six P M. A roll call, we have Beth Gott, we have Ben Harper, myself, Mark Good, and hopefully, we're gonna hear, or hopefully Lawson will be here soon, and I'll take a motion to excuse Brett.
I assume so.
Second? Motion to second, all in favor? Okay, three, nothing. Okay, I think, uh, we don't, the agenda's fine, I don't think we need to adjust anything, remove anything unless somebody disagrees. Minutes. I see you have on the agenda June twenty-fifth, but then you've included the June thirteenth, but we, we did approve the June thirteenth.
Oh, I did, I forgot.
You meant the thirteenth, didn't you, or?
Yes, I, yes, I meant the thirteenth, I'm sorry.
Okay, we, we already approved these as amended, and so we're all set there.
Okay, well, I just, I made the amendment.
Yeah, 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 no, yeah, we don't need to approve them a second time.
Okay.
Thanks, though. And, uh, we, hey, we have Beth and Ben here, so we can do the July eleventh minutes.
I'd make more than we approve this presented.
Yeah, they, they look fine to me.
Yeah.
Let Beth take a gander at them there.
A second.
Okay, motion to second and table to approve the minutes of July eleventh, all in favor? Three, nothing, okay. And, uh, July twenty-fifth, uh, we can't do that because we don't have a quorum of the people in attendance, so we're gonna have to table that till our next meeting. I'll take a motion to table the minutes until the next meeting.
I assume so.
For, uh, okay, second? Motion to second to table, uh, on the table, to table the minutes of July, um, twenty-fifth to our next meeting.
Twenty-five.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? You know, after five years, I'll, I'll catch on sooner or later. Okay. Full business, continuation of short-term rental discussion with our consultant, Noel Musson. Noel, how you doing tonight?
Doing well.
Enjoying the weather, I understand?
Loving it.
Okay. And, uh, since, uh, our last meeting, you and Jesse sat down with our town attorney, James Collier, and went over some of this and made some changes, and that's what's before us tonight, exactly, eh, eh, right?
Yep, I think we had had some discussions, uh, at the last planning board meeting, maybe it wasn't the last planning board meeting, was it July twenty-fifth?
Yes.
I think so.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I took those comments and the meeting we had with James Collier, and that's the schedule.
Okay. How, uh, I've looked them over and I've got some questions and have, think there's some, few changes that could be made, but do you wanna start, uh, maybe?
Uh, yeah, I think it was a very comprehensive meeting with James and, um, do you want me to wait until Lawson?
Is he here?
I think he just called.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, wait. That's okay, he had to change a diaper, I'm sure.
No, Sustainability Committee.
Oh.
Which was at the library at five.
Oh, geez.
And they're, and they're still going, but I have to get my final.
Thank you, 'cause you, uh, glad that we have you for the short-term rental.
Me too.
Oh, I should make one point before we continue, uh, we had a scheduled a public hearing for tonight, uh, on that subdivision, but, that's been changed because we, we goofed and the subdivision ordinance, unlike the other ordinance, requires two notices in the paper, so it's been posted properly now, I understand, from Jesse. So that'll be at our next meeting, right? Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
Thanks.
And, uh, please let the record show that Lawson showed up at six oh, what?
Six oh four.
Oh, four, okay.
Not too bad, not too bad.
Very good, Lawson, very good. Okay, and we've done the minutes, uh, actually, uh, can we do the twenty-fifth?
Lawson, see?
Lawson and me.
Well, you left early, though, so I don't know.
I wasn't even.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's wait to do that, okay, okay. So we're on the short-term rental, and, and Noel is starting to tell us.
Yes, so, we, uh, the version that is before you is a version that was amended, uh, based on comments from the plan, the discussion at the public meeting we had on the twenty-fifth, and, um, the meeting that Jesse and I had with James Collier.
Great.
And follow-up with his redlines from, from prior to that. So, um, yeah, I think, you know, again, it's fair to say that, um, the Board of Selectmen has asked the planning board to come up with a short-term rental licensing ordinance, and then, uh, so that's what we're working on now, and the follow-up discussion with that is really more of a policy decision that the Board of Selectmen can start to think about in terms of how the town wants to deal with short-term rentals generally, this is one tool to do that. So, tonight, I'm really just gonna focus on not to, pros and cons of short-term rentals, when you add stuff, it's really just like, here's what we've been asked, here what we're producing is that it's a short-term rental licensing ordinance, uh, it's a fairly simple ordinance, in fact, I went sort of back and forth between calling it a registration ordinance or a licensing ordinance, and sort of leaned in on license as the term and not registration for a variety of reasons, one of which is, um, it really provides, the license is a little stronger tool than registration, and, and the event that the town wants to do something a little more, uh, in the future, then this, this structure will provide that opportunity, so a license is stronger than.
Instead of a registration, yeah.
Stronger in terms of like legal?
Yeah, it's a more, it's a more, uh, like registration's more like a voluntary thing, license is something more required. I actually talked to some other people about it, 'cause I was kinda struggling with it, I had a meeting with James and a few other attorneys said, yeah, we would say license is a good, good way to go. So, anyway, just as a partway of background.
Yep.
So, the first comment that, um, and I think James made some really good comments, and a lot of it was like, uh, for, for a lawyer to try to make things simpler. So that is the reflection of the first part of the purpose statement, you know, his, his comment really was, um, just tell us what it is, what's the purpose of this ordinance? We don't, you need all the flowery language at the front.
I recall us discussing that, keeping it short or whatever, and the consensus was to go with the longer form.
That's why I highlighted it and struck it through for conversation purposes. So we can definitely go back, it doesn't even have to do that, but that was really the first.
We can do either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's not a legal issue, it's just, yeah. I mean, any thoughts, folks? I, I, I was the one that wanted it short and sweet to begin with, but.
Was, was there a conversation about the term reasonable? In the, uh, in the proposed first sentence, it says the intent is to allow the continued reasonable short-term rental in legal residential properties?
No, we haven't really discussed reasonable.
Yep.
And why is reasonable in there?
We could definitely take it out.
Well, the continued reasonable. So you can continue unreasonable short-term rentals?
We're gonna discontinue unreasonable, and we're gonna continue reasonable. I guess for me, it just seems to introduce a question that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
About whether or not, like, what does it mean, what does a reasonable mean?
I, I would strike both continued reasonable, continued and reasonable. It is intended of this to allow the short-term rental of legal residential properties in the town of Tremont.
While minimizing negative impacts that generation generated.
Yeah. If we're gonna go with just that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that is a, a policy statement versus what the ordinance is, you know what I mean? The difference that, like, the intent is, we're saying, what you're saying by saying that is that you definitely want to, um,
Right.
articulate what I'm, what I'm getting at, it's more of an advocacy statement in my mind, but I'm not saying we should keep reasonable, I'm just saying, if you're gonna really simplify it, you should just say the intent of this is, ordinance is to establish a licensing program to enable the town to monitor and track the number of short-term rentals in town, hence the, blah, blah, blah.
That, that first sentence is a little tricky, I mean, it's potentially loaded in a way that it doesn't, I'm not sure the ordinance needs to be loaded.
And the other issue I had too is, i- it's, there are two cases where it says said short-term rentals and then said potential negative impacts, but the said's actually referred to what's been struck out, language up in there.
Okay.
'Cause you're not saying it, right? If you're striking that out, you're not really saying, it hasn't been said.
So what about Noel's suggestion about, is the intent of this ordinance to establish a licensing program, basically merging those first two sentences?
I'd like what you said.
Yeah, I would say the intent of this ordinance is to establish a licensing program to enable the town to monitor and track the number of short-term rentals in town, and to establish performance standards intended to protect property owners, renters, and neighbors from potential negative impacts.
I like that. What do you folks think?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Do you think we need, the shorter is better?
I think the, the shorter is better.
Okay.
Well, as where do you get the better off you are right there?
I'm with you there.
Well, the word reasonable to me is just like, is, is a loophole.
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah.
Well, that's the amount of opinions, whether it's reasonable or not.
Right, it's just a loophole for someone to come for us and.
But, but what he's suggesting eliminates the reasonable too.
Right.
Right, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That sounds like consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
You wanna move on, or you want, need a?
If you have anything under number two, I'd say have at it.
Not under number two, no.
And then, um, anything under number three?
I don't.
How about anything under?
Four, I do.
Alright.
Okay, uh, and this is true also with, uh, later on with the parking, uh, standards. Under residential dwelling unit, as defined in the town of Tremont land use zoning ordinance, and then also going on the parking, uh, based on standards for hotels, motels, blah, blah, required by the town of Tremont land use ordinance, my problem is, we should just use the definition instead of, if, instead of referring to the land use ordinance, and the reason I say that is because if some, for some reason, we don't find that what we've done here is adequate and wanna change it at some point, especially in the parking standards, we would have to change both the land use ordinance and this ordinance, and have voters approve both, and that's, it's an unnecessary, unnecessary step in my mind.
I would agree that that's fine under the parking standard, and I'd love to put a pin in the parking one, 'cause I only just threw that in there for conversation purposes, but I think that the reason why I kept, um, as a fine, as a, the Tremont land use zoning ordinance is because if you're gonna change the definition of dwelling unit, you would change it in the land use ordinance, and then you only have to change it once, if you have a definition here and you have a definition there.
Well, it works that way too, yeah, good point, good point.
So that's the only reason I did it, I'm happy to delete it one, but just by way of background. I'm a big fan of not having to change definitions multiple times, it's super hard to keep track of them.
I agree. My tiny little nitpicking thing is that it's actually just the land use ordinance, it's not, there's no zoning.
Yeah, that's true too, yeah, good point.
Yep.
So.
That's all I had there.
But then we're, we are introducing some definitions in this ordinance.
But they are unique to this ordinance.
That do not appear in here.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, in other places where you have, like, say, say, like, with Tremont, you, you, some, I think you're starting to consolidate some of your ordinances a little bit, but also you have separate ordinances. Some places actually just have like a definitions ordinance, or it's not even an ordinance, it's like a, it's, the definitions is a separate document that applies.
To all ordinances, yeah.
So, anyway, something to think about.
Yeah.
'Cause it does get confusing when you're like, what? But at the same time, you gotta, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, I'm more concerned about the parking one, okay, and we'll get to that later.
We'll definitely get to that.
So, so, if everybody else is okay with this residential dwelling unit, town of Tremont land use ordinance, fine with me.
Great.
So I had one, is that good?
Yep.
Yeah, looks good.
To point out under short-term rental, I added or portion thereof.
Yep.
Because that, and perhaps, so the conversation was, we wanna have it in the ordinance that includes people who are just living in their house and renting a room, so that's why that's.
Yeah, yeah, that, that makes sense.
And we changed the term, uh, the original terminology for short-term renter was short-term rental guest, so we changed that to short-term renter, just to eliminate, if you recall, the comments that James had.
Yeah.
In his redline version, he was confused about, you know, who's a short-term rental guest, are you renting to a guest and a guest, a renter, and blah, 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 so we're just like, let's just make it easier. So we turned it to short-term renter.
That sounds good to me, makes sense.
Um, let's see, under requirements, um, I don't think I changed anything there.
I got something.
Okay.
Okay, uh, under a license required.
Yep.
Second sentence, no short-term rental license shall be issued to an owner unless and, until the short-term rental is in compliance with the requirements of this ordinance. Okay, so I read this and the first thing I think was, how do we ensure compliance? Well, Sarah has to go out and inspect everything, and that is in the intent, and if we go over to the next page under C inspection, anytime a short-term rental application or renewal application is submitted for a property, the short-term rental applicant shall certify on the short-term rental application that the proposed short-term rental property will comply, or currently is in compliance with the short-term rental standards in this ordinance, and with all applicable ordinances of the town. I would think that should be over under the license required.
Yep. I definitely think we could move that sentence out of, under inspection, and just simplify the inspection sentence.
That sentence has nothing to do with inspection.
Yep.
But does have to do with, uh, getting a license, compliance with the, the ordinance, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that should be moved.
And I think that would remove the will comply part of that, to say that, just to make it clear that, like, you can't get a license until, unless you're in compliance, you have to be in compliance to get that license. The will comply implied, I read that and I think, oh, well, I can just, I can get my license now, I probably.
Next year, next year, I'll, I'll comply.
I'll get my smoke detectors in two months, and I think it's clearer if it's it's currently in compliance.
Right, you shouldn't get a license until you check all the boxes that it complies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, we could, you could strike will comply or currently as well, so rental property is in compliance.
Yeah.
Any comments from down the other end here?
Sounds, sounds reasonable.
Yep. That's all, that's all I had, yeah, there.
So I can see how that fits into A, oh, I apologize, I actually did make minor ch, uh, change here. So, under the requirements, we just sort of like clarified a little bit, that there's a first term, first-time license application, and then remember we were talking about the, the timelines and, like, and Jesse had originally said, let's make it, um, I think I had calendar year in the first draft, and then Jesse said, let's make it.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, and then James put in his comments, let's make it March thirty-first, and so I was like.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So we, now we're back to, um, it, the license expires, it's a calendar year license, you can apply at any time, if you're a first-time licensee, you can apply any time over the course of the year, so if I bought a house today and decided I wanted to turn it into a short-term rental, I could apply to the town office tomorrow and apply for a license, that license is only valid for this year.
Yep.
And then I have to get a renewal. And so the renewal timeframe is, we basically, if you looked a little farther ahead, under, uh, short-term, under D, short-term rental license renewal.
Yep.
There is a bit of a timeframe for accepting renewal applications, so it's December through March, or ending in March, at the beginning of March. And then the, then the Board of Selectmen may be able to, you know, if you do it after that, then they're just gonna give you, like, the fee might go up or something like that.
Right.
The idea there is you can reapply before December first, but you need to make sure you apply, you know, by March first, otherwise, there's a penalty.
Right. Now, if I come to, uh, the town in May for my first-time license, am I going to have to pay the full year license fee?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
I would say keep it simple, and the fee for a license is whatever it is, and don't give them a red, you know, you're not gonna go back.
Yeah, no, yeah.
That out, yeah, that's, that would be.
I agree, okay.
Here's the fee, pay it, if you come in, if you came in August, you have to pay the same fees.
Right, yeah. It's just like, if I don't get, my car registration runs out in August and I don't get it registered till October, I still pay the full year's fee, yeah.
That's how I would suggest.
Yeah.
Just, our, our mantra here has been trying to keep it.
Simple, stupid.
Yep.
Is the renewal, why distinguish between a renewal and a first-time license at all?
Um, well, we did talk about this with James, I'm gonna try to, see if I can summarize, um.
Good question.
Yeah, I think that the second application might be easier than the first application, so you're just coming in and you have, there, there's no reason you have to do that.
Right.
Yep. You could basically just say, it expires in January, in December, and you have to, you have until March first to apply for a renewal.
My instinct sitting here is to leave the language in here, keep them as separate things. Mostly so that if in the future, if we wanted to either change the first-time application to be more comprehensive.
Yep.
And then have a different application for renewal, that gets to your point, I think that right now, the first-time application's pretty easy, so it's hard to imagine a much simpler.
Right.
Renewal application. Or if we wanted to regulate numbers, to say, no, you know, if we wanted to say no more first-time renewals, you can only, or no first-time applications, only accepting renewals.
Yep.
For the next five years or something, or until we get to some number, then we have that structure already in there. This stage right now, it feels a little bit, uh, not redundant or like extraneous, like, but I'm okay leaving it in.
I think it's good to have the framework there, that you have a first-time process and a renewal process, and even if in practice, maybe for the first few years, it's exactly, you know, the.
Right.
It's, it's really not that much, the six oh one F doesn't the other, I think it's good to have that framework.
Satisfied?
Very.
Down here, okay.
Alright, so, under, um, the licensing procedure, I think generally speaking, it's all the same, I think I might have moved some language around, um, so that the license requirement, licensing procedure or a couple of, you know, made more sense. Um, yep, the licensing number, the inspection process, we had noted on C, we're gonna move that first sentence to the beginning. We've got the renewal process, the transferability is the same, um, notice is the same, I think I went through and just tried to make sure, but again, I've read this a lot of times, so the one thing I keep miss, kept missing was the, uh, the, we are not requiring, you mean, your advertisements to put your license number on an advertisement.
Yeah, that's not on here now, I didn't see it.
I'm not sure I did a word search for that. Um, under standards, um, that's all pretty much the same, um, just to clarify, I think one of my comments at the last meeting was, why are we not using the same, like, reference language?
Yeah.
Under carbon monoxide detectors and fuel, gas detectors, and then James explained, well, as a lawyer, this is how we like to write things, so you said it, it's like when you're writing and you make a, a report, and you spell it out the first time, and then you abbreviate it every time after that, it's a sentence.
Okay, I, I asked this the last time, at the end of each of these, like twenty-five M R S, whatever.
Yep.
Section, as A M, does that mean as amended?
It does.
Is that a proper?
Apparently. Yep.
I mean, I, I looked at the statute and it doesn't say that.
Well, I would, I asked if, should we rewrite it to be like Title twenty-five of the main revised statutes, as may be amended from time to time?
Which, yeah, it's in there, yeah.
For each one, and then I was advised that, no, you don't need to do it that way, so that's the way it is.
So why do we have, uh, as may be amended from, under the carbon monoxide detectors, but non-on-fuel gas detectors?
We do, it's just, yeah.
Because it's the same thing, say, I, say, we, I was writing, if I were writing a report for, um, Island Housing Trust, and so I'm writing a report, and then in the first sentence that I use the term island, the word, I, the Island Housing Trust, I'd write, I, Island Housing Trust parentheses, I H T, and then every time after that, I would just use the I H T abbreviation, it's the same concept, it's the way James is.
Okay. So leave the, under carbon monoxide detectors, leave the as may be amended written out.
Yep.
As well as the weird abbreviation for amended.
Yep.
Yep, that's what.
I still don't, I'm still not buying that one.
Your copy editor is not, you know, doesn't get away with it.
I'm still not buying that one, but.
So, like, I talked to him about it, 'cause I would say, why don't we just write it out the same way?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought, or, or, or at least A M E N D period.
That was, uh, I did not go to law school, I went to graduate school, so.
Okay, okay.
I was one year away from law school.
Okay.
So that's why I did not argue, I did not.
Okay. Yeah, you were too busy, no, nevermind.
Yep. Um, alright, so the next one is.
Hold on, oh, where were you going, parking?
I was going to.
Okay, go ahead.
So, under parking, I think we had the same comment at the last meeting, which was, can we be a little more specific for parking? So however we reference this, I put it in here and highlighted, because I went back and forth to say, I did some research to try to figure out if there were parking standards for short-term rentals, I couldn't find any, so what I.
You mean in other towns?
In other places, yep, so what I was thinking about was, again, it's a residential use.
Yeah.
Turning into something else, so it's.
Right.
Let's just, without arguing about whether or not it should be a residential use or not, it is a residential use for all purposes of what we're talking about.
Okay.
So, in yours, in the town standards, residential use requires, I think it's just two parking spaces.
For a residential unit, two per unit, yeah.
So then I was thinking, well, do you want it, so really, I put this in here as a conversation.
Great.
So it could be residential, just stick with whatever the standard is for residential use, or right under beneath that, there was, there's that transient accommodation or hotel, motel requires, I think it's one space per.
Every sleeping room plus one for every two employees.
Right.
And, and so, so you have, need a space for the cleaning person that comes on Saturday morning to clean up, I don't think so, so.
Yep, the reason I put it in there again, I, I was thinking it would, you'd wanna say, one space per bedroom.
Yeah, well, we also talked about sleeping areas too.
Yep.
And I, I, I spent some time this afternoon, wasted some time this afternoon, I should say, trying to figure out a better way to do this, so that I didn't come up with anything, but, for example, okay, the, the way would be with the, if we'd go with one for every, uh, sleeping room, as in the ordinance, forget about the one for every two employees.
Yep.
Let's just say, a, a two-bedroom, uh, uh, plus one sleeping area place, that would mean three spaces, right? Yet that would be for six people, you would only, could keep six people in there, or legally house six people, right? Okay. So do you need three spaces for six people?
That's.
Could be two cars or three, I mean.
It depends, that's what I was.
I mean, you could turn a minivan full, family, and that's.
That's kind of why I like the term sufficient parking, but I know how that ends up.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, gets to the reasonable thing, what's reasonable or not.
Yeah, you could also just base it on, you know, keep the same statements, the, this is the other thing that I, was, I went back and forth on this, so. the reason I put this in here is to have this very discussion. The owner must provide sufficient off-street parking for vehicles of all overnight, short-term, or in verse, and a guest within a minimum of two, you know, spaces per dwelling, it's like exact per dwelling.
Right.
Like as referred to in the town's.
Two per dwelling unit?
Yep.
So if there's more than one unit on the property, yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, your ordinance says single-family unit, two family, two per family unit, so. I assume that means if you have a.
I think, believe it also says, doesn't have, uh.
So you have, if it's two per family, then I don't know what family units is, if it's not that way. But I assume you want to have two, one, two parking spaces per house. And then if you have additional, you have another parking space.
And then you could have a family reunion where five vehicles show up and there's only six people.
You can't regulate that at your own house, that's not regulated.
My instinct is to, I mean, I think that we should have a parking, think part of the standard, but to keep it very simple, to use the residential requirement, not use hotels and motels. And I guess I'm saying that, two reasons, one of which is I think the policy is great, I don't think that parking is a major issue in Tremont right now. If it becomes an issue in the future, we have a place where we can then amend it and change it, and we can institute some different requirements.
As long as it doesn't refer to the land use ordinance, right?
Um.
Unless you wanted to change the land use ordinance, and I don't think we do, because.
Well, right, I think, I think, I mean, it, I think if, if right now we say per the residential requirement in the land use ordinance, that's fine, if in the future we could change that to say, to, you know, a, a, you know, a, a space per bedroom, and remove the reference to the land use ordinance without having to change the land use ordinance.
So, under our parking spaces required for dwellings, single-family unit, two per family unit, additional family unit, one per family unit. So, to me, that means that, okay, if you have a garage apartment that you're renting out,
Mm-hmm.
okay, you need two for your house, plus one for the garage apartment, right?
That's how I read that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I've, I think you should define family unit.
Right, family is defined, and dwelling unit.
Right.
Is defined.
Yeah, family unit, yeah, that's.
Do you know what that means, is that a ratio, like for every two people, and you have, for every one person, you have two?
Well, that two to one ratio, it says here too, and see, I, I, I got a little confused by that too.
What page are you on?
Do all that, uh, page eight forty-one of the land use ordinance, uh, and we don't have any definitions.
Right. I think what it means is, at the very least, you should have two parking spaces per house.
Yes.
And then if you add an additional family unit or structure, then you're gonna have to add another parking space. So if I had my house, plus the guest house, I'd need three spaces.
Yep.
If I'm doing a multi-family unit, it's still two per unit, so if I had a.
Three units in there, it's six, yeah.
I'd need six. I think that's what that means.
Yeah.
It's just a little more complicated.
Pretty confusing. Next year.
I don't like the term family unit.
Land use ordinance, but.
Yeah, it's all, it's good, but I think that, the dilemma I was going by first for this ordinance, it was the, you wanna have the parking space per bedroom, or do you wanna just require two parking spaces? Or two per, that's the problem. See, I would rather reference this, cause it's easier to go back and say, oh, I see you have a property that you're doing two weekly rentals on, short-term rentals on, and now you need to have three spaces at least. Or do you wanna just have two per weekly rental unit? This is the problem now, we're getting into standards. I would keep it simple and just say two per structure, two per defined term.
The.
Dwelling unit.
No, two per short-term rental.
Yeah, two per short-term rental.
Yes. Unit.
No, no, you know, just short-term rental.
Yeah, it's just, whatever, however short-term rental is defined as the unit.
And if you're just renting a bedroom in your house, then you better have extra parking.
You can show two.
And you'd have to show two, two, two spots for that, one single bedroom.
Right, I don't know, you could weigh in too, because you're, you're gonna be, I'm checking this out, but is it gonna be confusing if somebody comes in and says, I live here, but I'm renting out my, uh, short-term rental, here's my two spaces? And then what about the two spaces for you when you're significant other's car?
So you and Lawson are both saying two per short-term rental.
Yep.
Yep.
Period.
So you need four spaces.
I think you're right.
That sounds good, I like that, you folks?
I think it's too complicated.
Well, if I have a short-term rental, I need to at least provide two parking spaces. If it's, if it's, if it's a vacation rental, like where I just rent, own the house, but I'm never there, I just rent it out, you just need two spaces. If it's a house that I live in, and I rent out a bedroom, I still need two spaces. Plus whatever you're gonna require for, for me to live there.
Okay, I, I think it's too restrictive.
Yeah.
Why?
Requiring two spaces, just cause it's a short-term rental?
Yep.
You know, maybe a one bedroom, you know, you got two folks, one car, you're gonna require them to have two spaces for that.
Yep.
I think you use it, I think the term you used earlier, shall provide sufficient packing, I think is, is, it's getting too restrictive, I think.
Yep.
I know James didn't like that because it wasn't specific enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, sufficient, sufficient to me may not be sufficient to Sarah.
Right, uh, well, I agree with you, I love the concept of just being able to, like, say, what do you, what do you mean? Like, here's my scenario, sufficient gives you the opportunity to like make a case for something.
How many cars do you have at your house?
I have four cars in my house.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's a lot.
So if you're gonna rent out a bedroom, you gotta have space for two more cars, well.
Right.
Actually, I only, still won't have to have space for four cars. And then I just have to figure out where I put my.
And, and it can be argued that you could have your four spots and not actually meet the sufficient requirement. Your neighbor might be saying, he doesn't have sufficient parking, cause he's owns four cars. Even though he's got the spots.
Currently, I don't think that there's a parking problem because of short-term rentals in the town of Tremont.
I agree, right.
Although I think this might help us figure that out.
Yeah.
I think it might make it worse.
The problem is not having specificity, oh, does, and I have been in this situation before, not specifically, oh, actually in parking in other towns, where they don't have any parking standards, even like what you have. They just say you need to provide sufficient parking, then you're getting into an argument with the planning board about, well, what do you mean, there's like an open, you know, municipal lot right across the street from this apartment building we're putting up, why do we need to provide off-street parking? Or whatever, I mean, it just helps you not get into that. How about just providing one space per weekly rental?
I like two better. I mean, it's two for a, a regular house.
Yep. Yeah, I think the only confusing part is gonna be if it's a, like a hosted home state, so if you stay there, if you live there and rented. I don't know how many there are.
Do you have any idea how many short-term rentals we have in Tremont?
Uh, not really, it's hard to, uh, uh, it's hard to determine, although that's one of the reasons we're developing this registration, or I should say licensing, uh, is so we can get a handle on it and see if it is a problem like some people have told us it is, or come to us before saying that it is. And I, uh, it's my understanding that there is software now that, in fact, Bar Harbor's looking at this, that goes and looks at all these Airbnb, Verbo, and all these weekly rental sites, and then compares that against, uh, what's licensed or registered in the town, so you could find out, you know, wait, these people are renting something and they're not licensed as well.
Does Bahab already have an audience?
Yeah.
Bar Harbor has a very restrictive audience, yeah, we don't wanna go there.
Yeah, so there, there are a lot of, there's a couple of good, um, we've got a lot of research on this, and there are a couple of good, uh, companies that do track, it's basically helping communities manage this uh, short-term rental thing. Um, and, yeah, the license, the way they track it is that, yeah, they have some sophisticated, you know, computer algorithms that can go out and like search all of the web, you know, the web to find it out, but it is based on, you have to have the license number on your advertisement, so if you don't, it'll pick up on that. So we're not requiring that, and I don't think we want to do that. That's like a whole other level of.
Yeah, we, we tried, you know, in the comprehensive plan, plan process, we tried to get a handle on how many of these were, we had in town, and we didn't really come up with anything, uh, substantial, real number. So what's the consensus here, folks?
I think my vote would be.
Two?
Two, two, two spots.
Yeah, that's what I would go with, two spots.
I would say one.
Two spots for?
Per.
Per unit.
Not per unit, per short-term rental.
Short-term rental. Well, Ben seems to be, I'm with, um, Beth and Lawson on that. Ben seems to be out, you, you think we need a vote? I, I don't think we really need a vote.
Yeah.
Do you? Let's go with the two spots, sorry, Ben.
All right, all right.
You don't need to go to the bathroom and stab yourself, do you?
So what I think I'm gonna do is, I love this, this sentence, the owner must provide sufficient off-street parking. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna revise that sentence to say something like, at a minimum, the owner must provide two parking spaces per short-term rental.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna keep the sentence that said, the total number of vehicles allowed in a short-term rental shall be limited to the number of off-street parking designated, blah, blah, blah. We'll keep all that.
Yep. Sounds good.
All right. All right, there's parking, the rest of the stuff is pretty much the same. Um, and then the last section, uh, we, with violations, penalties, and enforcement, has been modified so that it's really, um, so the way it was written before was very much modeled by, after the select board being kind of the, you know, the decider. So the legal advice was, let's make, make sure we're making, cause the, the select board shouldn't be, um, subjugate to the Board of Appeals, it really is like up at the top, so you need to, it really should be a, um, app, apply code enforcement, issue Board of Appeals Court, and that's how.
And the select board is never involved?
The select board is, uh, would be involved in a way that they're always involved with enforcement issues through the code enforcement officer.
Okay, what?
Is your design name?
Yeah.
What was the layer again?
It should go, if you, if you apply for it, and then there's a violation, the code enforcement officer determines that there's a violation.
Right.
Then they'll, you'll issue a notice of violation.
Okay.
Then it will go to the Board of Appeals.
Yep.
Then it will go to court.
Okay.
The way that we had it written before would be, the board of selectmen makes decisions on things, and then it goes to court. So we, we're trying to keep the Board of Appeals in.
Yep.
The mix.
Yeah.
That's the really.
I'm okay with that change.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Uh, under advertising, social media isn't mentioned, but it says websites, you think that's covered under, under there, that's all?
Um, I mean, could put social media.
The last sentence there, it just seems like, not limited to newspapers, magazines, flyers, handbills, television commercials, radio, signage, direct mail, websites, or text messages. I, I, I think it's covered under websites, but I just wanted to raise that question just in case.
Yeah, I'll think about that. It's probably not a problem to have it.
It's interesting, cause probably, it's, we could just say websites or social media or text messages.
Is Twitter a website, or is it just social media?
It's not even Twitter.
Social media?
No, Twitter's no longer, is it?
Nope.
Oh, X, X, that's okay.
It defies definition.
What's the, the other one now?
Instagram.
Yeah, yeah, but no, the, the new one that Zuckerberg came up with.
Meta.
Met, yeah, no, no, uh, maybe I'm.
But it is over Facebook, there's a, but there is something opposite X, but I don't remember it's.
Yes, I can't think what it's called either, it's something.
I think it starts with T, Prince?
What did you say?
Prince, or something like that, starts with a T, I think.
So, yeah, so maybe let's put social media in there, just to cover, but.
It's our domain.
Okay.
Okay.
That's work.
So basically, um, what I can do is make these changes, I can ask everybody, just make, let me know it's okay to send to the board, but I think we can write up, I'd like to write up a little memo and talk to Jesse about getting on the board, the general, or how do you wanna handle it?
My preference, if it works out with you, is we've, we made the changes, or, tonight. Um, send that amend, the amended draft to, uh, selectmen.
Yep.
For inclusion on a town warrant.
Okay.
Whatever, and, yeah, if you wanna send us a copy.
Yep.
That would be great, I mean, what do you folks think?
I, I agree, I do not feel like I need to see it again or approve it before it goes.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I think, I trust you to make the right changes.
Yep, and what my thought, my plan will be to kinda, I'm gonna, when we get to getting it in front of the board, it was basically, I'm gonna add a cover memo to it, that tries to highlight the intent of this, and then probably after the meeting, talk more about, you know, policies related to short-term rentals.
Right.
Before you ask, this is the product, try to keep it simple, you know, kind of explain the, the purpose.
Is it useful as part of that memo to include a short summary of the process that led us, led to that? So that they can see that, you know, we've had a public, a couple of public copies, we received, caused in the public, and we've gone through, however many drafts we got through, and.
When they charged us with developing this ordinance, they wanted something by August, and I'd like to get it to August, and if we could.
They didn't say what year, did they?
You know, they didn't.
I'm sure that was an actual discussion we had at that meeting.
Yeah, I remember. I, I know, I, I remember making them make a motion so that it would be right. Yeah, that's, sounds good, I, I think they meet, they're gonna have another meeting this month. I think they schedule one next, Monday, is it?
I, I don't think they're doing that, I think the next one is theirs in September.
No, they're gonna, they scheduled an August meeting, I believe, I'm talking to Jesse, I think they're gonna do, they, they left that one open, I don't.
Oh, meeting.
Yeah. It's my hopes that this gets on the warrant for the November election, cause I don't wanna have to deal with this and the comp plan, which won't be on that.
Really?
No, come on.
That's true, it's.
You just went to the state for approval, and if it's not backed by select, to selectmen by this month, in that meeting, forget it. They have the whole public hearings on it.
They have staffed up at the state, but we submitted a couple plans, and it took six months.
Yeah.
I think it took six months to get swan's, I don't, it was just like.
And I'm sure there're gonna be some tweaks after it comes back from the state as well, so.
They're always up.
Yeah. Anything else, guys, uh, gang?
Thank you, Noel, this.
Noel, good job, thank you for helping us through this, you all set with this, and you think you can get it to selectmen sometime soon, or?
Yep, I do.
There's a select board meeting on Monday.
On Monday, that's what I thought, yeah.
Not sure I'll be at that meeting, but.
Can you get that to them by then?
I can talk to Jesse, and it shouldn't take long to make these amendments, so we can probably wrap that up and send it up on a little memo, yeah.
Okay, I, I'll take a motion to, uh, uh, send the amended version of the, uh, short-term rental ordinance on to selectmen. Should we make it for their next meeting, you, you sure you could do that, yeah?
I can send.
Just say their next meeting.
Yeah.
That's it.
I'll make a motion to send the amended, uh, draft of the short-term rental, what's that word, licensing ordinance, um, to the selectmen for their consideration in their next meeting.
Second.
It's a tie, I think. It's a tie, I think. Okay, motion and second on the table to send the amended version of the, or have Noel send the amended version of the short-term licensing ordinance to Selectmen for consideration at their next meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, easy enough, thank you, sir.
No problem, thank you. I would say, generally speaking, we could have continued discussions at some point in the future, like, we dodged the question of whether or not short-term rentals should be in the land use ordinance as a use. So there is some conversation in the future that might need to be had about, you know, how, our, our short-term rentals businesses, are they different than residential uses, and how do we want to think about that from a land use perspective? I think you want to wait until you find out, like, okay, what's the real problem?
Yeah, yeah.
But, you know, not.
This will be a tool to get us to that step, if we need to go there.
It's a tool to have the conversation, to start having this conversation, to understand the data, and then think about, you know, in, in then doing so, you could distinguish between what I'll call a vacation rental and a short-term rental. So like a vacation rental is like my property at Ann's Point, which is, I don't live there, I rent it. I love to live there, I don't yet, so, and then a short-term rental is usually one where, like, what my grandmother used to do, you know, move into a basement and rent it out for the summer to pay for taxes or whatever. Some people have their house, they can go, you know, rent that out. So it's like a difference between a vacation rental where it's not your primary residence, and a short-term rental which could be your primary residence.
That's a good point, yeah.
So you can start to think about, you know, that distinction on a land use level.
Well, that's down the road for now.
That's great.
Yep.
Let's get through this one first. Great.
Thanks.
You may be excused, sir.
What was that?
You may be excused, sir.
Great, now I have to be kept a.
Okay, clock out.
I'm clocked out. So now I have to zoom in, I weren't here, I wasn't here on that, so now I have to go zoom into another meeting.
Oh, you, you want us to keep you around for a while? We can arrange it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, we have no other business, but I do want to remind everybody that, and maybe Beth, you were here, and, and Ben, maybe you were gone for, to the hospital when we did this, we scheduled the site visits?
Yeah.
Okay.
One P M.
That'll be Thursday, August seventeenth at one P M. At Harkins, start at Harkins, and that's on Cape Road, and then we go to Libarts after that. Beth, I don't know whether you'll be able to make it, yeah.
I will, okay, site visit, okay.
August seven, Thursday, August seventeenth, one P M.
One, okay.
Harkins on the Cape Road to begin with, I guess that'll be easy enough to find, I haven't driven down there like I was planning to, to take a look.
I can call the office and.
Um, yes, John and I were down there, like, two weeks ago, looking at a different property, we drove by. Code Blue is starting to build his house on lot number seven, which is one of the ones closest to the road, so you can see his camper from there, but if you want to look it up, it shares that driveway with one seventy-five, Cape Road, so.
Yep, okay. And we'll see vehicles there, I guess, anyway, somebody would be there, Tom or somebody, huh?
Tom, sure.
Yeah.
When we were doing the nine-one-one addresses, we sent them into the state, and when they sent them back to, on the Algerine Coast, all of those houses they put in the water. And so we called up the state, and the lady that, that I talked to, she said, yeah, but we come in the other way. I said, doesn't make any difference which direction, which end you came in, those houses.
Houses still aren't in the water, they're, they're houseboats. Oh, boy.
Is the Algerine only referred to the portion of Cape Road that's on the water, closest to the boat ramp?
The Algerine coast?
Yeah, just that little section there.
That one top.
Where the town dock is.
So I do think it is closer to like the Mount Desert side, if you're going that way.
That's where we're going, yeah, yeah, sorry, this is.
Oh, oh, we should go down that side?
I think it's close.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, I mean, obviously you can go either way.
I know you can go either way, but what's the quickest, shortest way down to Cape Road?
Definitely go along.
The Cape Road, yes, you want to go from.
The north end.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because I thought it was the other way, okay.
And then it will be on your right if you go that way.
Yep.
If you're coming in my boat, you want to come into Sawyer's Cove and then hike up to the woods.
Okay. My, my hinkley's in the shop. Wow, I'm sorry.
It must be next to mine.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Gang, any, any comments, questions, or anything, or otherwise, I'll take a motion to schedule our next meeting for August twenty-second. Is that, we do that?
Yep.
Yep, twenty-second.
I'll make a motion to schedule our next meeting for August twenty-second at six P M, here in the Harvey Kelly Meeting Room.
Second.
Motion and second to schedule the meeting August twenty-second, six P M, right here in Harvey Kelly Meeting Room. Any discussion? Here, none in favor? Okay, and Beth, what's the exact time there?
I don't get a ring alarm, six fifty-five.
Okay, take a motion to adjourn at six fifty-five. Motion and second to adjourn at six fifty-five. All in favor? Okay, thanks, gang, very productive.
Good.
And fast.
And fast, that's great, in and out, less than an hour.